This is a Celine City Council Work Meeting to order at 6:04 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members Gearbaugh, McClellan, Mitchell, and Mayor Potem Tahar. Councilmember CO and Dylan will be absent from both the work meeting and regular meeting. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Deputy Clerk Bloom, Wastewater Superintendent Skoll, Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, as well as DPW Director Fordice and City Superintendent Engineer Rubel. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you'd be so kind to sign in in the back, we would appreciate that. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments. As submitted, Mr. Gearbaugh? Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Next, we come to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. And if you do have comments, please come to the podium.
I'll just stand here.
If you speak loud enough, Mr. Grossman, that's fine.
Yeah, I just have a few things. Most of them are probably pretty obvious, especially with the first one is as far as locating a new plant, and nobody wants one of these in their backyards. I've mentioned that before. I think the fact that the city infrastructure runs down from Monroe Street, I think the obvious expansion point is the old Universal property due to the fact that all the infrastructure leads that way at this point in time. The only thing that we thought he might come up with that recommended is way from off the industrial park because that, the whole segments of that are fed with force mains like water mains can follow contours and walk them down. You could run that to the east of town and possibly send that to Yucca, which may not be a bad idea. The other thing, possibility is you could have those two force mains go into a separate sewage plant that just treats the industrial plant, or the industrial park because the industrial park is pretty much, you know, processed water rather than typical sewage. So you may find an economical way of treating that area down because there's a lot more water than solids in that area. So primarily, my suggestion is to keep it in the location it is and enhance it for the orders and future expansions. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Are there additional citizen comments? No, then we'll proceed to our first discussion item, which is the wastewater treatment plan expansion. In addition to staff, we have Mr. Brian Rubel from Tetra Tech here with us this evening. Brian, as always, we appreciate your continued efforts on our behalf and your attendance this evening. Here's how we're going to proceed. This is the larger of the two issues we're dealing with this evening, so we'll probably take about an hour to begin discussion on wastewater treatment plan expansion. Around 7 o'clock, we'll transition and start, and bring Director Scruggs to the table to discuss the REC Center proposed rate changes for 2018. As I've mentioned in the past, expanding the wastewater treatment plant is a large, complex, multi-dimensional issue. We are simply beginning the discussion this evening. I'm not going to be looking for any consensus, and we will not be making any decisions this evening. But I thought it was appropriate and prudent to begin the discussion and think 15, 20 years out. I think it's really incumbent upon us as leaders to do that on occasion. So, Mr. Campbell, do you have anything that you would like to share before I turn it over to our wastewater treatment superintendent, Skoll, and Mr. Rubel?
No, I think we can, we can have questions later, so.
Okay, very good. Mr. Skoll, do you want to begin?
Sure.
And again, please speak into the microphone, and we'll let you present, as well as Mr. Rubel. And if there's anyone else on staff who wishes to make comment, we'll entertain those comments, and then we'll work our way around the table for comments and questions.
Well, I really don't have anything to present, just some food for thought. When we look at expansion of the wastewater plant, we have to look at what we would like to expand to as far as volume-wise to, you know, to encompass anything we plan for the city in the next 15 to 20 years. Existing site may be a little small. I don't know if we have the capacity for the extra treatment processes. I shouldn't say capacity, the extra area for the additional treatment processes we would need. Going to YCUA may be an option. We're talking 15 to 20 years down the line. Location of the, relocating the wastewater plant may be very expensive when you consider you have to buy the site, build the plant, and get the mains to the plant. It's going to be very expensive, and it's going to take a lot of long-term thinking. That's really, I mean, we really have to figure out what direction we want the city to go to and what we expect as far as expansion to consider, to even put a value on what it would cost to expand the plant. And we do have a more short-term, more pressing issue, and that's the West Side sewer line is pretty much at capacity.
Right.
So it's not that we don't have excess capacity currently at the plant, we just don't have any way, you know, on that side, we're kind of blocked by the side of the main.
Mr. Rubel, can I turn it over to you?
Yeah, absolutely.
I should have prefaced, Mr. Brian Rubel.
Spell different, but, well, I agree completely with Mr. Skoll's outline of the goals, objectives that you need to lay out. I, and again, I think you would start with some sort of an engineering study to lay out this. I'll come up with, give you some choices for the future. And I think the attachment that you had in your package is just kind of some bullet lists of what I think that study, what steps that study would go through. So my intention today was just to maybe run through that briefly and see where that, what questions might come out of that.
Please.
You know, the first item is exactly as Bob just mentioned, is to confirm the service area. Where, what are the ultimate service area for the sewer system? I know you have the UDA area, you've got annexation areas that you've identified, so that's at least a head start towards that. Is it larger than that or not? I don't know, but whoever completed that study would need some guidance on that. Then I think step two would be to identify what is needed at your current plant and what the footprint can support at your current plant. Now, the nice thing about that is many of, many of those questions are going to be answered as part of the SAW grant work that's currently going on. So later in 2018, I think many of those answers will be, will come out of that work. In fact, I know they will. That will only cover, that's only a grant that covers the current, studying your current infrastructure, so it won't have the future needs at that plant. But understanding what investment you didn't make in your current plant is a big part of that. So that grant will give you that answer. Then item three is just to take a look at the technology for the treatment and what that would look like. I think that's going to be relatively constant regardless of where it is. It will identify the size of tanks and pumps and so forth. With that size, much of the cost will come out of the analysis. Item four was just to look at options for locations. Clearly, in and around your current site should be one of those locations. All the sewers run to that direction, as the audience members so correctly pointed out. You might want to look, though, elsewhere around the perimeter of the city. Currently, your plant's at the upwind side of the community, so putting it on the downwind side may make a certain amount of sense. You probably wouldn't, I wouldn't think at this stage you would identify a specific parcel that you would want to locate as much as maybe a group of parcels or geographic area. And some of the considerations there, too, would be, you know, I've outlined, should be close to the river, should be close to major roads to assist with egress and ingress of trucks, truck traffic and so forth. And completely, step five, I completely agree that you should look at a regional alternative, too. Maybe going through Pittsfield to YCUA. That clearly, in fact, that would be a requirement even of many of the funding mechanisms you might use to build the plant, is that you thoroughly vetted that out. So with that in mind, you would just, you would develop costs for each of those, conceptual costs. There would be a range to those costs at this point because you're not going through and putting a price on every piece of pipe, so broad costs at this stage. And then the rest of the items would be just, you know, presentation-related, writing reports, working with the council, answer questions, refining the concept. Everything beyond that is just a level of detail. You could, you could literally throw hundreds of thousands of dollars at such a study, or I think at a minimum, you'd probably, $50,000 plus or minus, I think I gave a range of 40 to 60 perhaps, to give you some broad, broad data to work with. And it would take several months to go through that process. I would say the minimum would be three months, and I would think four to five would be probably more realistic to have meetings with YCUA and meet with some vendors about costs and so forth, so. In broad terms, I think those would be the steps you'd want to go through to get to a decision point.
Thank you, Mr. Brian Rubel. Does any other member of staff wish to make a comment at this time? Mr. Fordice, no. Mr. Gary Rubel, no. No. Mr. Campbell? Well, then I'll start with questions and comments, and then turn it over to Councilwoman McClellan, and then end with Councilwoman Mitchell. Brian, Mr. Rubel, in your professional opinion, should we pursue an analysis that addresses many of the items outlined in your memo simultaneously to the SAW grant, or should it be subsequent to the completion of that analysis?
What I'm not privy to is the urgency of the questions that are being asked of you by property owners. If there are literally hundreds of homes wanting to be built soon, I think you need to start that analysis earlier. If, if the demand is dozens, a more modest amount, I think waiting to the SAW grant is most of the way along, is the most economical way to proceed because you won't have to repeat some of those steps.
I, I do concur with the comment that was made during the public portion of tonight's meeting, that the low-hanging fruit, for lack of a better way to articulate it, is to see how much expansion could happen on the existing site. And Bob, perhaps you, Mr. Skoll, perhaps you can comment on that tonight. I know we do have some space there. I know that we have some areas with outdated antiquated equipment that no longer services the facility. So, you know, one of the things that I would like to see the city pursue is a real comprehensive review of what could be done on that existing site because I don't think there's any way around it. One, scouting sites, then negotiating a price, then engineering, planning, developing, and constructing a new or additional wastewater treatment plant will, one, take some time and come at a considerable cost. Do you have any insights on that this evening, Mr. Skoll?
The site we have now is somewhat limited. I do believe we do have site, some property where we demolished some antiquated equipment, stuff that's been offline for 30 years. We could squeeze in an additional primary tank. The troublesome spot would be sludge digestion and storage. I'm not really sure, unless there was, if we're just spitballing here, if there was a way to increase the size of the tank by going up, that's an engineering question. And, but that's really the point of issue I see is the solids handling aspect of it. We're really tied on space there. We have space to the north of the retention pond, but again, that's moving closer to the neighborhoods. I don't know if we really want to do that. The trickling filters can be removed, and that would probably be ample room for a primary tank. I don't believe we need, again, it depends on what we set as a goal for flow, I don't really think we need a secondary tank. But the solids handling is going to be difficult. Not, I don't know if it's impossible, maybe there's a different technology that we can somehow limit the volume by increasing the concentration. I don't know.
Okay. Something that would have to be vetted. The other comment that I would make is, to a certain extent, and this is directed more towards you, Mr. Rubel, Mr. Brian Rubel, is of course, if we look to our northern border, there are two parcels that are subject to automatic annexation, which are currently within Pittsfield Township. Once those are brought into the city, there really is an opportunity for additional growth on our north end. Or to the east, because we're dealing with both Pittsfield Chartered Township and York Chartered Township. So the growth is really to our west, primarily in Celine Township. And some of that area has been talked about and discussed over the past decade, which I think you're aware of. We do have at least one, potentially two sites in Celine Township that abut the city that a developer or property owner has expressed interest in bringing into the city, which leads me to the point that Mr. Skoll made during his initial remarks, which is, I think more than a comprehensive analysis, what is the most time-sensitive and urgent is trying to find a way to get utilities to our western border.
If there's no doubt that sewage convenience needs to be part of growing the city, our , a service area, I should say. Yeah.
So those are my initial thoughts. I'm certainly in favor of empowering staff to develop an RFP for an outside entity to conduct a comprehensive analysis to address many of these questions. But again, I think the most time-sensitive issue is what can we do to, to get some of those, to get some of that vital infrastructure to our western border. And I will note, because actually, Mr. Grossman made me aware of this, but Celine Township, at their most recent township board meeting, indicated to the developers of Andalina Farms that they were going to abide by the consent agreement and not permit access to the existing wastewater treatment facility that services the Mobile Home Park, that Andalina Farms should pursue construction of their own. I'm not sure that's going to be economical for them. But again, it underscores the need to see what we can do to get infrastructure out there because I think there's, there's demand. And to an earlier point, that's where we're going to grow, is on our western border. There's any debate about that. So, didn't mean to muddy the water, those are just some initial thoughts, gentlemen. Ms. McClellan, can I turn it over to you for questions or comments?
Sure. How, so the SAW grant is due to be finished when?
The SAW grant will be finished in 2019. I think we'll be through most of the analysis of the wastewater plant in 2018.
2018, so not, not too far out. I, my inclination would be to wait to see what, I mean, we're already having that study done. It's going to provide us with information that we need that would, we would otherwise have to pay for. And by the time we get a study together and going forward, you know, how many months difference is it going to be before you get the information from SAW grant or from a new study? So my inclination would be to just wait to see what, what that has to say in then going I guess I'm kind of just on the fence about, I personally would like to see it explored to do some kind of a regional facility. I think, you know, expansion is important, but I don't necessarily think that we should be carrying all of that cost. So that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Potem Tahar?
Yes, thank you. So first of all, I would agree with Ms. McClellan about holding off to do this study until the SAW grant is essentially complete, at least for this aspect, so that we can build on that. I mean, it's economy of effort and funding. And I think also, we need to have the time to get a vision of, and maybe this is fundamental to the whole question, is what development we are interested in preparing for. There's an assumption on part of some people at least, that we will, yes, we will absolutely expand to the west, but we haven't actually said that as a, as a body. So I think that, that's an important discussion to have, for us to have, not just city council but staff and even citizen input, perhaps. So that would, that would be a foundational thing that I would, that I would think would be important to do first. And then, so we've talked about the west side, so the West Side Main is currently at capacity in terms of its size. Did I understand that correctly? So that, that additional sources could be added because the main itself can't handle additional. And then, but there, so that was one issue for the Andalina Farms question, is I also understood that there was a plant capacity issue having to do with, with the Andalina Farms development possibility as well, or did I misunderstand that?
No, I mean, they're both related. If you look at infill, what we have set aside for potential growth within the existing boundaries, we would not have the capacity for Andalina Farms.
Okay. And, and does the, does that capacity, existing capacity include the possibility of the areas that the mayor referred to that are currently part of Pittsfield Township?
Yes.
There is capacity for that? Okay. So a question about wastewater treatment methods. I know it has been commented in the past, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, that our current technology is not possibly the newest technology. So is the possibility of moving to a new technology for wastewater treatment also part of the, of the discussion we should be having, or the topics that should be studied?
Yes, I think that is a component of the study to identify for a new facility what treatment technology should be implemented.
So new technologies are not possible at the current location?
They are, and that has been evaluated in the past. And it, the retrofit cost would be substantial. It would be in the millions to convert to a different technology. Again, what you do have works, it meets permit limits. It requires rotating very large, heavy steel objects that can be prone to breaking. So there are advantages to what you have, and that's the disadvantages, the labor, the cost it takes to maintain these huge discs.
So a study would include looking at the pros and cons of?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That would be my recommendation to look at.
Yes, okay. Thank you. And then I think just one last specific comment. Someone said the current wastewater treatment plant is upwind from the city, and moving it to a different location might move it into a better location in that regard, but then it's going to always be upwind for someone. So I wouldn't make that, in my mind, a major reason for changing the location. To emphasize better odor control, absolutely, but not necessarily for movement. That's it for now.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Potem Tahar. Councilmember Gearbaugh?
I agree with the questions that Ms. Tahar has mentioned because environmental regulations and things are the other piece that I'm concerned about, whether we can continue to meet those if they become more and more stringent. The other part being, can we maintain the cost of even having our own plant? At some point, we're going to become capped in terms of how we're going to be able to spread our costs, and unless we're continually having individuals and things that can use that, you're going to have significant rate increases. So one of the things I'm looking at would be the cost differential between maintaining our plant versus building a new one versus the Yucca thing. I think those are the three trade-offs. I have a feeling as we move forward, giant regional plants are going to be the solution, it's not going to be communities like us maintaining a plant. So I think if we're looking 10 to 20, 30 years in the future, that we need to really understand. If we're talking a development, or not a development authority, but a regional authority, we need to start talking about that now, instead of putting money into a study that we may not have any agreement from any of the adjoining townships that they want to participate in something like that. In terms of the infill, what other properties or capacity do we have still left besides the layer properties?
We have about, in order to keep it under 85%, which is a state part where you need to look at expanding, right around 210,000 a day.
Sewage?
Yeah.
And we, what does that equillate out to in terms of houses or something?
It'd be 1,000, 2,000, might be surprised.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, and I apologize for interrupting, Mr. Gearbaugh, but when we talk about infill in the city of Celine, in terms of existing parcels that are underutilized or not developed at all, many of them exist within our industrial parks.
Correct.
So in theory, it would be an industrial business, which may be a large consumer of both water and sewer capacity.
But again, the likelihood of that happening now is also a huge impact in terms of their economic feasibility in order to maintain their operating costs and so forth, because even FERCIA and all those realize that they have to recycle water, they can't continue to request more water or process even the expenses associated with cleaning them.
It seems generally speaking, the trend of industrial use is going down. They are more energy efficient, they do recycle their water, and the fact that fortunately, most of the heavy manufacturing and stuff that really uses a lot of water is no longer.
And that's kind of the thing that, for us right now, would be helpful to understand that, because if there is the potential, like in Adelaide Farms, to come onboard, I know the problem is, is the transmission lines and all of that, but should we have something where that isn't a problem to the south of us or to the west, and not to the west, but the southwest, I would say, or even to the north, that we have the ability to bring that in, should it propose us? Because it would still allow us to have the growth, but it also would continue to be something that we can continue to allow that growth in our tax base and so forth. I'm not so sure that we're going to build houses in the industrial park, but we don't know what that we're going to actually use that for. So I think we need to understand that, what we have, what we anticipated, we're going to try and do with it, and to see whether or not there's a better number that we would use. The other one would be actually, when we talked about technology, and you mentioned that, the RVCs, that is part of our problem, too, is that if we were to try to retrofit or change our plant, we just don't have the location to build the new and then leave the original running at the same point in time.
Correct. That is always the holdup with this kind of topic, is you gotta, you can't just go in there and rip it out. You need to maintain services while you expand.
So in case if we wanted to build something that way, we'd be off pace. If we had larger capacity for, and I thought that is, you've got crap somewhere if you can't put it anywhere, what does that do in terms of our capacity, in terms of the plant itself? Is it that we can't process more waste, or we just can't hold more waste?
Both, both. There's certain EPA standards for treatment that you have to maintain, but there's also the storage of the biosolids, it's also an issue. And that was addressed in Tetra Tech's early report, that we simply don't have, that's one of the weak spots. Primary treatment, the RVC is the biological portion, but mainly the digestion and storage of the biosolids.
So say we were to build a large storage capacity across the street, and then have that in place, and you phase it in and destroy, and destroy what we have currently, freeing up maybe some space unless it's all underground or whatever. Could you phase in things like that to build, to build in more capacity for our plant?
Yes, we have additional property. So if we did get the property next door, they could build storage tanks, or we really have to sit down and really think about how we're going to do this, but yeah, as long as we have additional land. But if you're calling for the site that we currently have, I don't see how that's going to work.
Well, and phasing was one of my things, too, was I didn't know if, even if we had additional, what it would be in terms of really making it a 21st or 22nd century-type facility. I think that's it. And then the other thing, of course, is understanding- And then the other thing, of course, is understanding, as we've already talked about, the full cost, the debt, the approach. Even tonight, I'm looking at all the things that we're going to be doing in terms of the plant itself and for odor abatement and everything, and then even looking at our water infrastructure, and just working capital and all of that. We may just be too small to handle this. We've got to talk, I think, in a larger scale, that whatever we do for us is not necessarily going to solve a problem in 10 years.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you. This has been an issue that's been on my mind for a long time, so I'm really happy to be diving into this a little bit more. One of the confusion pieces for me is that when we were looking at the odor control solutions, one of the questions I asked was, well, are we putting millions of dollars into this site? And then are we going to need to expand? Can we expand into this site? Or is this like, oh, we're going to fix this, and then 15 years from now, we're going to need a whole new plant? So what I remember is that, at that time, I was told we had the capacity at our current site to expand.
We do have the capacity for the infill, which is within the city boundaries. If we're looking at 15 or 20 years down the road to expand or build a new building, the odor abatement money was needed for the existing facility.
Uh-huh.
But if we're going to expand further, then we need more room.
Right. So it's, I'm thinking of, you know, just as a citizen, I want to do the best I can to save our city money and use our money responsibly. I think a lot about who bears the cost of expansion. Is that all of us? You know, when we look at the traditional ethical idea of bearing the burden equally, who is to benefit? And then the burden of that benefit is shared across all parties, hopefully equally. So I see the challenge of, you know, while we have this big project coming up, are we asking only our citizens to pay for it? Are we looking at the buildings that are coming in now and asking them, you know, you are going to be part of the thing that pushes us, so yeah, we're going to require you to put some capital into, against a future expansion? I don't have the experience with how municipalities handle this. Todd, have you talked to cities that have handled this in the past five or 10 years?
Have not. Again, not knowing direction, but as far as, I mean, be, typically speaking, you know, through user fees and, you know, that's how, when we do an annual rate study, determine what our capital needs are, right, and the projected costs. And that determines, so certainly, absolutely, as we go forward, the users would be the ones, the users on the system would be paying for. Then, of course, there's also, when you have new come on, you have connection fees and the like, too. So, I mean, they're all paying their share.
Okay. So that's how they, through the service fees. And what percentage of an expansion would that pay for? I mean, what, you know, is it, it would pay for 30% or, oh, it'll pay for 80%?
Well, you need to know how much the cost is going to be, and then you determine how you would spread that across. That's, like I said, when we do actual annual analysis of our rates. It's fairly typical to do a five-year study. You have a company help you do a five-year study. Well, and that's what we used to do. And then, a few years ago, working with Tetra Tech, we actually paid a little extra, and they gave us the ability, the tools, to do it ourselves on an annual basis. So that's what we've been doing the last three or four years, that we take our capital needs, roll it in with the current rate structure, and that determines what the rates are going to be going forward. And we can certainly do a forecast, too. But again, that's going to determine, when you say the percentage, I mean, it's going to depend on, we have, I think, Mr. Gearbaum asked that about looking at the working capital and how much we may have to borrow. So the first, when we did Phase 1 improvements at wastewater 12, 13, remember what year was that? I remember it was 13 or 14. Phase 1 improvements?
We started in '12.
12, yeah.
And then constructed in '13.
Yeah. And so, but that was done with cash on hand. And then the second phase, then subsequently, was we incurred debt to do that. But that, yeah, I mean, it would cover, you know, we would, presumably, we would go into, have to issue debt to go into something this significant, unless we do a regional thing. But again, we still, even to put pipes and ground is not necessarily going to be cheap. So, but probably, at some level, there's going to be some level of indebtedness to move a project forward.
Sure.
And so at that point, you work that into your rates.
Across all of the users?
Yes, correct.
So one of the things we discussed tonight that I'm hearing is that the line, the current line running out west, is that capacity? Is that right?
Correct.
And how much is it to run another line? Bob's eyes went wide there for the audience.
You would need to help me define what size of an area I need to collect.
I see.
First, and then I can tell you how much it would cost.
I see. So to do another 1,000 homes out west?
How far out west?
How far out west? Well, you know, like, I don't know, Brian, like, next to us. You, I'm, no one's going to hold you to these numbers. This is like-
It's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay. But it's not, I mean, you know. Okay.
Probably a couple hundred dollars a foot.
Right.
So if you run it half a mile, that's a half a million dollars, I think.
Okay. All right.
The original UDA is what, about 1,500 acres area, I think, roughly?
1,500 acres, yeah. An assessment study of public buildings and public units, discharge, and so the rest.
Right. So, I mean, it's obviously to the west. I believe the westerly limit was just east of Dell, right? I think. And then south to John, no, a little bit, was it south of Johnson, too?
About 200.
About 200, in that area, so.
As far as regional, I think it makes sense to look into that. I guess my questions are, are there close municipalities or townships that are facing our problem? So we talk about Ypsilanti, but would, maybe they don't care if we're running short, or maybe they're fine. And, you know, I have no idea about their capacity. But are there options for regional partnerships other than Ypsilanti?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know if Brian can respond to that, but what I would say is, you know, there are a lot of communities in southeast Michigan that are part of regional authority where they say, oh, don't you get your, you know, don't you get your water from Detroit, or don't you get your, one way that was through another regional authority that ends up going there, like Yucca, for instance. So, but I don't know if you had any more information, or you can respond better to that than I can.
I think all that would matter in your case are your neighboring communities. Are they interested in sewer service and joining you for treatment service? If it, you know, if it's Clinton, that's just too far away.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I think we know, candidly, I think we know the answer for three of our neighbors, Celine, York, and what I've told you about. I don't think they want to get into the water and sewer business. That would be my hunch, but that's an educated guess that I'd be willing to put some money on.
Right. So that limits us. And even if we were to make it more attractive, then the cost savings that partnering could produce, those cost savings would go down. So, okay. What else do I have? I guess what would help me is to start talking to communities who have done this, because there will be lessons learned. There'll be things that we can do to save money for our citizens, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel. So I guess my request is that we start reaching out and talking to communities in, you know, doesn't have to be Michigan, could be Ohio, but who's done this before and how did they do it? Do they like the results? And what do they wish they had done differently? That information would help me. And I guess I do feel a sense of urgency as far as, let's pick a direction that we think we're going to go, and let's start. It's like, I don't want to kick the can further down the road than what we're doing now. It feels like we're short on housing now, and I want to be able to grow and grow responsibly.
If I may. Just to clarify, Councilwoman Mitchell, the, as far as a regional, you want staff to reach out to other communities and talk about the regional approach, or you're just doing an expansion? Or both?
I think both. I think, you know, it would be interesting, too. And I'm, you know, if you send me, here are some names of municipalities that have recently expanded. I'm fine with going through minutes of work meetings and seeing what I can find out. You know, I don't have a problem helping with the research of it. But I want to go into this with as much information as possible, so that we can save our money as much as possible and use it as wisely as possible.
School. Thank you.
I think that the information that Councilwoman Mitchell requests can probably be accumulated by Michigan Municipal League, or it's worth reaching out to them to see if they have some case studies on multiple municipalities who collaborated on the issue of water and sewer. I know that the city manager took good notes. I'm assuming that Mr. Skull and Mr. Brian Rubel did as well. I didn't hear anything that was mentioned at the dais this evening that I would object to including in a comprehensive analysis. I think all of the items that were articulated by my colleagues deserve scrutiny and deserve to be vetted. Additionally, the point that was made by Mayor Protem Taha, I think, is a valuable one. And I guess my preference would be to work with the city manager and somehow incorporate that topic into our goal and strategy session. But I think the issue of expansion, how we expand, if we expand, and what that expansion looks like, is something that should be discussed by the entire group when we do our planning and visioning for the ensuing years. It sounds like, unless you need additional clarification and direction, council gave you a number of ideas and issues that they'd like explored and vetted in a comprehensive analysis. Needless to say, I would request that you reach out to Councilwoman Dillon and Councilmember Seo to sit down with them and to discuss tonight's meeting, and to address any questions and concerns that they have. I would like to revisit this issue as a discussion item sometime in the not-too-distant future, and I would hope that we would be able to entertain a motion to engage a third party to do some sort of comprehensive analysis sometime in mid-2018 at the very latest. Mr. Rubel, you indicated that some of the data that we need from the SAW grant will be in at that time. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think in summer, you, I don't, well, it'll be done. We would have to accelerate a component of the report, probably.
Okay.
But I think that could be done.
Okay. The other thing, I mean, I strongly maintain that, you know, in addition to exploring the regional approach and looking at identifying a new site versus expanding at our wastewater treatment plant, while that's all important and needs to be done, I still think the more time-sensitive issue is infrastructure on our western border. So, you know, I just want to make that point emphatic for the record. Gentlemen, is there anything else you'd like to share this evening? Mr. Gary Rubel?
There was a question about what, to ask the government or somebody, I actually think it was, so I just ran a quick number on the earth boundary, that if they came in with the projected, 174 homes, that generates 1,200,000,000,000,000,000,000,000,000,000,000 annually. That's one kind of, I, so-
Okay. Oh, excuse me.
So people who gave the connection charge to manage 174 homes, gave a very large connection that applies into this, of course, physical construction. And so that's one time, they, then after that, they all know that.
Right. But that's as they connect. That's as they build the homes.
At that time.
Right. So I'm just saying, I mean, it's going to take a while to build 174 homes. So, but it will, but certainly at the end of the day, when all those houses are built, that's what will have been the total paid, yes.
Mr. Gearbaum?
Just one thing we need to remember, too, that size of homes and the number of people in those homes is not the five or six users that used to be, so it's the 1.5 or the 2. So the likelihood of what we used to have as capacity, even though we add more homes, isn't necessarily going to be significant enough to cover the additional costs and so forth. The only other thing I was wondering, even I think this will be addressed probably as part of the study, is the approach of conservation that we would do as a city, or requirements that we would require in building codes or so forth, in order to address some of that potential offset that we would put in place in terms of, not necessarily the use of water, but the way that water is actually processed.
The only, my final thought, I want to jump back to this, Bob and Brian Rubel. I think it was a point that Councilmember Gearbaum made earlier. I think we need to look again at that number relating to infill in the city. Because to my earlier point, a number of our vacant or underutilized parcels are in the industrial park. Your point is well-taken, Bob, that today, the manner in which water is used and conserved is fundamentally different than it was 25 or 30 years ago. But more importantly, I don't see those lots being sold and having another Forcia or another American soy built on those parcels. The reality is, is that we're seeing interest in those parcels, but we're seeing interest on the level of O3 Sports, for instance, in that warehouse that used to be owned by another gentleman. It doesn't matter. But the point is, it's not, he doesn't consume a great deal of water or sewer capacity. So I think that issue needs to be vetted a bit further as well. Again, we will revisit this. Anything else that members of council would like to bring up at this time? Please?
Is there, I guess, the priority is established, if we were to have individuals come to us and we grant them the ability to come into the city, is there any potential legal ramifications? So say, we have a property on the south side, and we have one on the north side, and they both come to us, and we say, well, yeah, we're going to give you access on the north, but we're not going to deal with you on the south, because we feel that we can handle that on the north, but we can't handle it on the south. Is that reasonable rationalization that we would be able to make that kind of judgment call?
Why?
Because even right now, I think about, you know, automatic annexation versus what Adelaide Farms came to us. They came to us, and we saw that being a more beneficial development for us, why would we say no to them when we know that the other property could maybe not be annexed in for another 10, 15 years?
Sure. Well, so my short answer is going to be, that's definitely a question for City Attorney Smith. But again, what the rationale has been in the past has been, well, that property is on the automatic, right, wrong, or different, it just has, that's why it was included in the study, right, for that capacity. So, because it was intended at some point in the future that that property would come in to be developed and come into the city. So, but yeah, that's a question for Mr. Smith.
The only reason why I'm asking that, too, is because of the fact that Pittsfield does have water and sewer. So those properties, if they decided they didn't want to pay our hookup fees and everything, they could just say, no, we're going to build our development, but go with Pittsfield and not with the city of Celine. Correct?
Not based on the current terms of-
I think, I think, I think-
I don't know what the Water and Sewer Authority is in that property when it's-
I don't know what the water and sewer authority is in that property when it's surrounded.
I think, I think the intent is to, once it becomes developed, once.
Sold and developed.
Sold and developed, it comes in the city automatically. Because that was part of the agreement too, that they wouldn't extend utilities.
If we could have that question answered?
Sure.
The other thing that makes the lair property different from a parcel on the western, on our southwest border, is the issue of infrastructure. I mean, there's just, the water main's that capacity. Sewer main, excuse me, is that capacity on the western border. And we don't have that issue on, to the north. All right, well, you'll connect with Councilwoman Dillon and CO. Of course, in the meantime, if individuals have questions, comments, please direct them towards the city manager. Mr. Rubel, thank you, we'll be in touch. You are excused, or at least for now, you're sticking around for the regular meeting. And members who'd like to get something else to eat or drink, you're welcome to do that. Director Scruggs, do you have a PowerPoint or no? No, okay. I'll let you take Bob or Mr. Rubel's seat. And I'm gonna use the restroom, but you may begin when you're ready. Carla?
Yeah, it's been changed.
Nice, you get dinner, did you?
I'm all good.
Yeah, okay. That counts.
This is going on really.
That's right.
I have one for the people.
Yeah, that's my, my good stuff. My people are more.
Hello.
How's it going?
Good. You do look a little red.
Yeah, well, I just, I was walking outside and I think.
Before I get going, I did pass out some new information. I updated my memo from last week. And along with a couple of fun, colorful graphs to take a look at. But first, before we get into that, Todd had mentioned to kinda go through our first quarter financial summary. And I wanted to do that briefly. So we did start this first quarter a little bit slower than we did last year. In my professional opinion, it is due largely because of the extremely nice fall that we had. We had a lot more people continuing their recreation outside and not coming inside. I did a little bit of research on my own and found other facilities were experiencing the same thing. Arbor Fit, I talked to a friend that works out there and they're seeing the same type of trends along with some of the other local facilities. But just to kinda recap, actually, it's a little bit more than the first quarter because we do have the October numbers in. So I'll just kinda recap each of the months. July, we started off strong, strong with memberships. Classes were a little bit behind due to, we're still recovering from a personal trainer, longtime personal trainer that we had. And then programs, especially Kids Camp, was a little bit low because we experienced a lot of the sign-ups for the end of the season before the end of our fiscal year. So we had high numbers at the end of June, whereas some of that money normally is in July. But overall, we had a positive fund balance of $7,000 for July. August and September were not as strong. Our memberships slowed down. Again, beautiful fall extends outdoor recreation season, which impacts our sales. And we had some unusually large expenditures. If you went through the monthly financials, the treasurer's office paid all of our fringes up in advance. So unusually large expenditure in the fringes. And also, there's a new line that is put into our budget for retiree fringes. So that's an additional, I didn't add up everything, but it's about $35,000 additional expenditure in our budget that we did not have in previous years. October, we're looking a little bit better, which is good news. We made up for a lot, some of the membership revenues. We did a quite well, about 38 memberships more in October than we did the previous year, which is a good thing because typically, that September, October are relatively low membership months. So we actually did very well that way. It may look like we're a little bit low in our leagues, but our flag football check did not come until November. So that's, will wash out in November. And our new, our personal training is still a little bit low, but we do have a new trainer that we just brought onboard, Jennifer Barberino. In summary, my staff and I were, you know, we look at our financials every month. We are trying to look for new ways to adjust our revenues. We continue to be frugal on our expenditures. We're monitoring to make adjustments in order to end up with a strong end of the fiscal year budget. One thing to note, we do have a pretty healthy fund balance summary over the past six years. Since FY12, we had a fund balance of $221,000. And we built it up to 2015, we were at $498,000. And I just received the memo from Joanne McDonough today. And I saw that it was adjusted, our prior year fund balance for last year ended up being $524,000. And we're projecting to have a $455,000 fund balance for this year. Those are good numbers. I attached, one of the charts that I gave you, it's kind of a snapshot of some of the significant expenditures that we've had over the fiscal years. And even with our operating costs and whatnot, we have been, we've had some pretty significant repair items. We've had engineering costs for our auditorium ventilation project and for the roof project. And we've stayed relatively healthy. Our north parking lot, $165,000 in FY15 and 16 have all been part of our budget and we've maintained very well. So that's a little snapshot.
Very helpful, thank you.
Moving into the discussion about rates and some other ideas to continue our goals of improving the financial stability of the rec center and to grow our memberships by improving the experience for our membership. Those are two goals that actually in 2013, the Recreation Task Force adopted. And I still think they're very relevant. Those are two great goals to always have in mind. And in the memorandum that I gave you, we kinda did a, kind of a clip of the things that we did change during the, in January 2014. And briefly, all of those changes proved to be very, very successful. They were, they were great changes that we did. Adding fitness classes into the membership fees was well-received by our membership. It's a great selling tool for staff. It's a great marketing and advertising that we now have. Adjusting our ages was also well-received by everyone. The hours of operation definitely fit the need for expanded recreation opportunities. Couples' membership, to date, we have sold 211 couple packages. That's what we currently have. And also, including the Saline Area School District definitely attracted more people. So as you can see, I kinda broke it down, but after that four-year mark, our, you know, our fund balance is healthy. We've grown our membership by 27%. And everything has been very positive. The recreation center has, is doing, is being, it's what it should be, is Saline's Community Rec Center. But right now, it's time to take some, you know, some additional steps. Take a look at our fees, take a look at our offerings, maybe make some tweaks here and there that I think will benefit membership growth. And just to kinda summarize a few of these things, this is a very, very minor detail, but it makes a big difference, especially to families and kids in high school. Currently, our adult age is 18 to 59. And our child is three to 17. And after hearing, you know, from parents, from kids, and kinda taking this into consideration, I do feel that this would be a well-received change to change the child to three to 18 and adult 19 to 59. And the reason is, there are quite a few high school students that turn 18 during their school, you know, during their senior year. And, you know, forever, they've been paying $5 and then all of a sudden, they turn 18 and they now have to pay 12. I think letting the kids go through high school, paying the $5 fee is more beneficial than not. So that's one adjustment that I'd like to see made. Including an additional six fitness classes, adding that into what we offer for, with the membership is another thing that I've, from feedback from the community and from my staff, I think it would be very appealing to offer these classes. Maybe more specific classes like teen-specific class, a senior-specific class, a family fitness, and an age group fitness, plus maybe a couple additional general fitness classes. I think that would take us to another level. It would continue to attract more people into the facility. And also, one thing that, since we opened in 1991, our free weight room, we have had a rule that you have to be 16, no exceptions, in order to go into that, into that weight room. And after hearing a lot from parents, from even teachers and coaches at the schools, a lot of the students, you know, once they're in high school, they start learning how to use the free weight equipment. They have classes, they're in sports and they're using this equipment. It's very desirable. And we felt that, our number one is safety. And with 14 and 15-year-olds, not to group them all as one, but it becomes an attractive nuisance sometimes. You have to be very careful, you have to concentrate, you can't goof around. And we felt like we could make an exception to this rule if we were to offer a class, which would be a revenue-generating class, that 14 and 15-year-olds would be able to take. And once they successfully pass that, they would be eligible to use the free weight room during supervised hours. And that is, if we read on a little bit further, that would be one thing I would like to offer is supervised hours that we would pay someone to be in the weight room, to watch what's going on and to assist and kinda keep an eye on what's going on. So that is, I think, a very reasonable compromise to the costs that we've been having. Revenue generation, I put together a projection, but I believe it is time to take a look at our fees. I've, we've done a comparison that, which is on another chart of other facilities in the area. And by raising our rates by 10%, it still keeps us in that low end of what people are charging for facilities. Keeping in mind, the rec center is a very unique facility, especially in Saline. We have pools, we have a gymnasium, we have the racquetball court, we have free weights, we have the fitness. We're kind of an all-encompassing type of facility versus several that you might see here. A powerhouse gym, a Snap Fitness, an Arbor Fit, Anytime Fitness. Those facilities are fitness-specific. They don't have the amenities that we offer, they don't have pools and whatnot. But then you also get into Dexter Wellness, the Washtenaw Health and Wellness Center, and Liberty Athletic Club Canton. Those are similar facilities that we, that, as the rec center. But I, what I believe is, even with this increase, we're still at a very affordable rate. And also, by adding in some of these fitness classes, some of these other things, I believe that we'll end up attracting more people, even though the rates are going up. And then, the other portion of this, the family extension fee, this was a new option that we initiated in 2014. And that's to take into account some of the alternative families that we might have. So a family whose parent might come and move in with them, or adult children moving back home. We allowed, or we have this family extension that can be utilized. And at that point, we didn't know how to price it, and we priced it at $50. And we feel that that is a little bit low. So we would suggest that we raise that to $100. If, I guess if you looked at it, you know, you're adding a whole nother person that would normally have to have their own membership for more than $200, still at a $100 rate. So it's still very affordable and I do believe people will take advantage of that as well. One thing that I've been working with, with the senior center, after quite a few conversations regarding being able to offer like a group membership to the senior center, the director of the Saline Area Senior Center and I met. And to offer a group membership, which we have established, the senior rate was lower than the lowest rate of our group membership. So that didn't make sense. It was, it would be, they would have to pay more to be part of our group. So we came up with a plan, actually Nancy had talked about this and kinda approached me on this. But being able to offer a discount for whatever the senior paid at, for a membership at the senior center, we would take that dollar amount and deduct it from whatever membership price or package that they would pay at the rec center. So for example, if, and their fees are fairly low, so say it's a $20 membership fee and they came in and wanted to get a couples' membership, whatever they paid at the senior center for their membership, we would take that dollar amount off of that couples' membership. Their ages don't necessarily coincide with our ages, so they would have to buy the age-appropriate membership fee. So they may qualify as a senior if they're over 60. If they're not over 60, so you can be 55 to join the senior center, they would be, they would buy a regular, you know, family rate or individual rate or whatnot. So that's something that we've been discussing. I wanted to throw that out there as an alternative and an option that obviously we would need to get, have kind of a formal agreement between the two entities and also approval from city council. approval from city council in order to do, go forward with that. I guess, you know, I, I believe that if we can, if, if we're able to plan for a rate increase, we can do a little bit of advertising in December to generate some, some new members and to get people in before the rates go up. Once January hits, we have a whole new opportunity for new fitness classes and January, February, March are definitely our, our heavy months for, for people joining. We get, we call it the New Year's Resolution Crowd. And to be honest, last year, the New Year's Resolution Crowd never really went away. It was very consistently busy in the facility, even through the summer. September, October, it kind of, well, I'm sorry, late August and September, it kind of quieted down, but it definitely is picking up again. So I think these are our next steps to continue our growth and to stay relevant as a fitness facility and, and in the community.
Thank you, Director Scruggs. Quick question for you. The last rate in, increase went into effect January 2014?
Correct.
Well, first of all, let me say, I appreciate again you providing us with a facility comparison. And it underscores your earlier point, which is, not only is the rec center affordable, but offers a whole host of amen, a whole host of amenities which many of our competitors do not. So I'm in favor of the rate increase. Essentially, it's, it's adjusting our rates to inflation based on the last time they were increased. You and I have talked in the past, I am a firm believer in offering additional amenities within reason to our patrons. And I think you've had great success in recent years in bringing online new classes with some really talented, skilled instructors. I would, I would reference Peak and Performance, which is a midday class, well-attended. It's so, it's such a good class, both you and I go. And I think that's just indicative of the type of people that you recruit and the types of classes that we offer. So I would encourage you to continue to explore different types of classes at different days, different times of the day and days of the week to appeal to, to different constituencies within our community. I think, you know, the issue of a senior discount has come up frequently at my annual senior conference. I think that's probably where you first heard about it. So I'm glad that something was, was, you were able to work out something with Director Cowan of the Celine Area Senior Center. I don't necessarily have any objections, Carla, to allowing 14 and 15-year-olds to use the weight room. Again, I, like you, I put a strong emphasis on, on safety. And if you don't know what you're doing in the weight room, you could seriously injure yourself. So I think making our young men and women go through some sort of class and then have supervision is, is, is critical. So, but I'm in support. Councilwoman Mitchell, can I start with you?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Scruggs. I think the, the input about the information you gave us, I cannot pretend to know everything that our facility offers. So for me, it would be helpful to have a column for, for really good comparison. This is how we, this is what we offer. And then I think I starred, because that was one of my questions, which of these facilities is most comparable? And I think you said Dexter.
Well, I would say that in price, Dexter and Washtenaw are both operated by the same, they're, they're part of the same group.
I see.
So their, their prices are very expensive, to be perfectly honest.
Sure.
Their facility, though, is fairly comparable.
Okay.
And Washtenaw County, same thing. Washtenaw County, I don't think you can compare operations because they do have a millage, an operating millage for that facility, thereby keeping their rates low, plus their target. It's the county versus the Celine Area School District. So, but facility-wise, it's very comparable.
Okay. And, and having that marked on here would just, it would be a shortcut for me and it would, it would help me because I'm new, I'm still new. But this, I felt this was an extraordinarily helpful piece of paper. And I think we're, you're looking at the right things as far as what amenities can we offer? How do we price to cover what we need to cover, but still remain competitive? And I, I think about that 48108 zip code down the street and actually talked to somebody in that zip code who had no idea about the Celine Rec Center. And I, I think it was just running into that person in the street and we were chit-chatting and she was, and I said, "Well, you realize there's a gym like less than a mile from your house." She's like, "What?" So I'm doing my part to try.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Spread it one person at a time. So I, I like the suggestions you have. Having had children, younger children, and my children are older, I think it's very common sense about the recommended age memberships. And then the, the weight training room, the free weight room. When you're talking about offering that fee-based course, do you have an idea of how much that would cost?
You know, we, we offer one for the cardio room. And we, it's a, it would be, that, that fee is $35 for the class. However, the free weight room is a little bit different. I think there's a little bit more emphasis on safety and, you know, rules and, and proper lifting techniques and so on and so forth. So it may, I would, I would say it would be under $50 for a, a class for that.
And is that going to help you cover the cost of the attendance?
It would, it wouldn't cover all of it.
Right.
You know, because there's, there, I'm not sure how many people, you know, it's kind of a, a guess. I could, I could probably tell you there's at least 25 kids right now that would take the class in a heartbeat.
Okay.
But I think having, you know, getting that out there and marketing that, I think a lot more, you know, word of mouth, the kids are going to come in a little bit more.
And it wouldn't be a yearly cost because I'm assuming, you know, summer hours?
Right.
So it'd be just for a number of months, I see. I mean, I, it, it feels like the things that you're talking about here are very common sense, you know, exactly what I would do with my limited information. So if you have that with your expertise, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm fully in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. And Councilmember Girbaugh, Mayor Pratim Tar, and Councilwoman McClellan, I would ask you to be mindful of time, we've got about seven minutes before I have to, no, it's quite all right.
I may have some that can be answered later, but part of my thing, I'm glad that we're doing the rate increase, although I'd like to see it more frequently because despite the fact we're losing ground for inflationary expenses as they increase because of our salary programs and everything else. So a four-year limitation seems, we should be doing it either every other year for the minimum. So going forward, because of what I expect will hit, we should be considering that. The other concern, when you mentioned that we're going to be offering the ability for 14 and 15-year-olds, has that been surveyed at all? Because I would be concerned of that impact on our, especially if it's the hours after work and overlays with that, that the other individuals, there's going to be more students and all that crowded into the one weight room, that I don't know what that impact is going to be. Not that I don't think it's not a bad idea, it's just a question of, will you lose customer, will we lose clients as a result of that?
Right. Yeah, it, it's not set in stone right now, but just discussions, preliminary discussions with my staff. Obviously, we'd want to do it at times that are more conducive for the teens to use it than, you know, like so, for example, right after school, say three to six.
And those aren't available at the schools? For that, that facilities are not available for them?
Not just for you, regular use. For teens, if they're in season or, you know, conditioning and things like that, they, they are able to use it.
The only other couple things, when we talk about decrease in the number of memberships and so forth, I am concerned about competition because we've had a number of facilities either relocate or open in our industrial park. And then the other one, I think there's a potential hit because of the concerns about healthcare insurance and so forth, that people are starting to cut back on their discretionary spending because of the uncertainty of what's going to be happening with some of that. So that could be part of the issue with it, but we'll see. And then the last thing, where I'm concerned about is, I know we're adding more things, it's always the incremental cost. If you look at, we're trying to keep up with inflation and then we're also adding some new, new expenses and then some other things, what we're not necessarily doing is keeping up with what we should be. I think even though we're getting more revenue in, if we were to continue to add more things or even if we were actually improving things like salary and some of those for your retention issues, we're going to be missing the, missing the blank, or missing the online. So although I'm glad we're doing these kind of changes, without a pro forma and a little more information, I'm still a little bit hesitant as, if 10% is enough to manage to cover whatever comes to mind, especially if we're not sure about our benefits and OPED and other pension costs that should be allocated to this operation, that should not be something that we cover out of the general fund.
Mr. Tar?
Okay, just, just a couple of comments about the, for, the free weight room. I'm all in favor of any safety measures. It seems like a good thing to do, but I'm definitely in favor of all of the safety concerns that you're dealing with. A 10% increase in the, in the membership fee after four years seems like a reasonable thing to do. I, but I'm intrigued by Mr. Girbaugh's idea of possibly doing maybe smaller increases more frequently. I don't know, worth looking at. And as I recall, in 2014, when the, the rates went up, the publicity was about all the new cool things available. Oh, and yes, by the way, that was a great strategy. And, and I'm, you know, I think the things that you're proposing to add will attract more people and I think it's a great, it's a good, really good strategy. And I hope the strategy with the Senior Center works.
Really quickly, I appreciate all your work on this. I'm in agreement, I think, I think the increases are reasonable. The family extension fee, I think, is really smart. The Senior Center, again, I'm glad that you could, you know, they've been on that for a long time.
Yeah.
So I'm glad that that's coming to fruition. The marketing piece, you know, we've talked about this before. I would love, love, love to see a direct mail, be able to go to that 48108 and those neighborhoods to the north of the rec center because I think that is just prime real estate for members that can walk. And there's the bike trail now that you can get, you know, you can get practically from, what is the, Story Point all the way to the rec center, all that. So I think, and then there's that new development that'll be going in across the street on Textile there, and Textile and State Street. I think that's, you know, if we can spend a little bit of money on a direct mail to those neighborhoods, I think we'd see quite a bit of return.
Definitely.
That's it for me.
Very good. Director Scruggs, between you and City Manager Campbell, hopefully you'll be able to connect with Councilwoman Dillon and Councilmember Seo to go over this. And perhaps you'll be able to follow up on some of the points that Mr. Girbaugh made. The only thing I would add is that while it is critically important that the facility get as close to revenue neutral as possible, the intent of the rec center is to encourage our citizens to lead more healthy lifestyles and to get as many people in the doors and as active as possible. So appreciate your, your continued efforts to make that a reality. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:29 PM. Moved by Girbaugh, seconded by McClellan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned.